Rick, this is the future plan from here.
Oh, no, we're we're quick.
Five.
I'm averaging.
You just said they put a.
It's a six o'clock and thirty seven.
So.
Six o'clock.
Well, there we go. This is the call for order. There is a quorum of the select board, quorums of the finance committees. And we have people in the audience. So we're we're in order right now. The thing I wanted to with your indulgence, I just wanted to go through all of the items on the agenda before we got to the real reason we're here. We're here for item four. So I wanted to dispense with as quickly as possible the other items so that we can comment on the depression of the warrants. I'll comment it so that anybody can ask a question. Try to figure out what they're doing here, why they might not want to be here. This is Dr. Condon, just so you all know. That's upstairs. So if there is, if there aren't, and by the way, before we start four, we're going to go over process. Because that that's, you know, we've not really done this before, so there's some stuff we'll go through. But I'm taking it that we're all set, ready to go, so there's no public comment that's kind of. I'm going to ask the PINCOM to allow me to move the minutes from talking about tonight to our meeting on September twenty seventh. So I I don't think we have to waste anybody's time talking about minutes on this meeting. I think it's more important that we get the warrants. So thanks, I got at least two people nodding their head. So communication, communications would just be in the nature of sometimes you end up having someone say, hey, I I need to know about this, or have you considered that? They typically come through email or phone call. If if anybody has anything, we should be aware of about the warrant articles that someone's communicated from the other side. There's no, we're not here tonight, please make that known. But if not, I would move past this item and get to the last one before the warrants, which is reviewing the schedule of future PINCOM meetings. We're in with the select board on September eighteenth, Monday, joint meeting. They, of course, have an incredible agenda, which is in front of you. They're asking us to show up at six forty five for this joint session. And then we had to realize that that after the joint session, there's going to be stuff both before and after that we might want to be in attendance on because there's a whole bunch of important stuff coming to fruition right now. So so six forty five joint meeting, Monday, September eighteenth. We'll do the same process that we're going to do shortly tonight about warrants. You can see from the scorecard, we've got kind of a nice tight selection tonight. So I kind of think we're going to get through everything that's scheduled tonight.
That's the first mistake.
Well, sure, okay. We'll see. So but I did want to, so September twenty seventh, there's a lot of stuff that's going to come at the end of the cycle and support stuff. And and it's like ZVA, complaining board stuff, but it's also CPA, I think, might have something for the DPC committee. This stuff is going to happen. So this September twenty seventh is going to be really important. And a lot of stuff always falls to the backside because people are getting important stuff together that they don't have. I wanted to ask the select board to consider, we don't need the answer, but you may want to join us on the twenty seventh. So we do yet another joint session because there's definitely three or four things that are all outside. So I'd I'd ask you to consider that. And then October fourth, don't show up at our meeting because we're going to be trying to finalize the booklet and stuff like that. We'll have enough to do and hopefully we'll have done everything by September twenty seventh. So Angus, is is that a good summary of of what might be expected? So six forty five on Monday, be thinking about that. So.
And and just when you say do everything by the twenty seventh, that's to make all the recommendations.
Yes, all the recommendations, yeah, yeah, right.
So Rob, you must have talked about that before because I already had a twenty seven.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, that's fair, that's not okay.
You're diligent that way, yes. I don't, I don't know that we ever, I mean, I don't know that we had agreed that we're in fact being joined.
That's right, yeah, they had been sat, but it hadn't been.
But you you were anticipating that, but.
We must have talked about.
Yeah, that's true. So 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 now we're at the real reason we're here. By the way, one public comment that could have been made was that we have some people here that have things to do elsewhere tonight. So for instance, Christine's public comment that may I go first?
That's my puppy ass class.
Right. So and so anyways, Wendy, did you want, since we're in joint session, did you want to kind of describe how you see? You know, so Angus queued up everything, which is great. We've got a package, so it's always great. But from there, we're going to go to presentation and then discussion. So why don't you just?
Okay, I mean, I guess what I envisioned is the discussion being with all the PINCOM and the select board. And any questions asked, any deliberation, I think, can happen as a group. And then we would stop and the select board would take a vote and PINCOM would take a vote. So rather than having like a separate, you know, discussion, I I think we all benefit from each other's questions and comments. So that's how I would like to.
The the whole purpose of the joint session was was that philosophy. And then you would go first, and that's particularly important because you may find yourself saying perhaps something not ready to go to the town meeting. So we we shouldn't be blowing on something.
So we remove it from the.
Yeah, so you you know, if you guys look at one another and say, well, let let's remove for a warrant, we don't want to be, you know.
I'm a very good supporting.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I hate to be wildly in favor of something that you've just decided to withdraw. So is does that sound good? Angus will queue stuff up and then we'll 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 go through it the way we always had, including presentation. So Angus, do you want to?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So this kind of scorecard we've sent around, everything with the, today's date nine fourteen. It was my way of saying we're ready. As far as we're concerned, we're ready, there's complete information. Doesn't mean you're going to get to everything tonight. I appreciate Rob's optimism. I hope he's correct, this would be great, because we know more more stuff for future meetings. But but if we don't go get through everything on the fourteenth, listed for the fourteen, that's not a problem. That was just our way of saying that stuff is ready, whereas if it's listed for the eighteenth, that means we have a speaker coming in the eighteenth who want to go up tonight or the twenty seventh because of land board hearing or CPA or or a couple of other things that will take that lag time. So they're listed in the order, you know, the numbers, those aren't necessarily the warrant article numbers, although I do think we're closing in. But I would suggest we start with the, what's number nineteen and twenty. That's both the proposal to establish a COA revolving fund as well as to authorize use of the COA revolving fund to establish the maximum annual amount that can go through that fund. Thought it by Christine to present, but I would also note that Jenny's been working with her as town accountant. And so this has been a kind of a collaborative effort to bring forward this proposal.
And now I need you to formal presentation.
Well, and the materials really speak for themselves, so it may be that.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to say like, so why did the came to your attention?
Do you want to get anything else?
Sure, yeah.
Just Mike can move it.
So this is listed as nineteen and twenty. So nineteen, we have an existing town bylaw that lists all the revolving fund. This is a proposal to amend that bylaw to establish a new council aging revolving fund, which would basically be funds in, funds out, no taxpayer dollars. What it means is, so maybe give an example, a couple of the trips that you.
Yeah, so recently we started doing some day trips to North Shore Music Theater. And what I'm looking for is to be able to charge seventy five dollars and be able to split that between the ticket, the bus transportation, the lunch. Just looking to that for that to wash. A month ago, we went to the North Shore Music Theater. The total cost was probably twenty three hundred about. We had twenty five people though, sixty five dollars a ticket. They were nice enough to allow us, the residents, to pay separately at the theater when we got there. This will then alleviate that.
And just to interject, so because the town can't prepay. We can't pay for services, we can't pay for twenty four attendees with taxpayer money. And then twenty two people show up and we effectively paid them services we didn't receive. So by law, that's where Jenny has to be kind of the part notice town accountant saying, you know, we want, we love what Christine's doing with these programs, but from an accounting standpoint, this will allow money in, money out.
Exactly, so my thought is if we offered, you know, a trip every month, even if it was every other month, that's how I came to the thirty thousand. Right now, we've been limiting it to twenty five people. You know, there's a lot of excitement about this. We could definitely grow that to thirty five, forty people attending.
And so no more money can be expended than comes in. So if twenty one thousand comes in or or two thousand comes in, that's the maximum that can go out. It can't expend more than comes in, so it's all user driven.
Does it ever accumulate funds?
It can actually.
Only by only by error?
I think it it's not legally, but I think in this instance where it's intended to be a wash.
Right, I'm not looking to make money on our seniors. We're looking for it to be a wash.
So the reason I ask is the two types of stabilization fund, one which pops out an accumulation of ten thousand.
Department, right, that's a different statute.
Exactly, right, so this isn't like that, this could. Right, right, so this this could accumulate, even though it's probably going to be small, right? So we don't have issues of losing it, okay, good. Yeah, thank you.
And then in terms of the amount, the town is capped to a total. If the aggregate amount of money in all of our revolving funds altogether can't exceed a certain amount. I don't happen to know what that amount is, but it's way more than it is. It's basically a non-issue. It's, I think it's like a percentage of our operating budget, it's some.
Actually, money in towards it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But but the thirty thousand is really a, you know, it's, I mean, we could say fifty thousand.
I would see that increasing, you know, in the next few years.
So we just need to make sure the bottom line of all the revolving funds, all that.
But the thirty or the fifty really just the amount in.
Correct.
And then.
Yeah, there's no.
The amount of power is going to.
It's going to be a wash.
Whatever, it's going to be a wash, yeah.
So Christine, the thirty thousand, there's some headroom in that, then you, because you're limited to thirty thousand, you probably want some headroom, so you don't inadvertently, you know, have two, two, two people who'd like to attend something and sorry, we hit our limit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the the trips are still growing. I think we've offered two, two trips so far. I don't see that we're going to go to a monthly trip anytime soon.
What if you did, what if you did go to a month? What do you, what do you think you're talking about, or or to Rick's point, what what if you could?
Then then I think we would be around thirty thousand, but we could increase this at springtime meeting, correct? So that.
Yeah, or you could, or you could set it right now.
Yeah, at at the springtime meeting, we, the town meetings ask to vote every spring.
Okay, so you. Re- re- reauthorized any of that stuffs on it here.
So the the limits can be about, and in fact are about.
So we could get there easily if it ran into, yeah, okay. Good.
And it just be grant one more. This offer.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Good, good. So you can present more if you want, but.
Yeah, if you have any questions.
You guys have any further follow on to this presentation, any further questions? Or Dan, you're, you may need to book something.
I'm just thinking there's.
You want to go on the trip? You want to go on the trip?
So so I I I do have one other question. Um, so, um, so say you have a trip schedule and you're, in the future, you'll be covering the cost of the show. Is the meal also included in, do you have like an aggregate cost that includes meal, transportation and the show? Or how do you, how do you manage that? How do you, how do you avoid ending up in a pickle somehow balancing your funds?
I I don't think I would end up in a pickle. I mean, I have, I have leeway with our formula grant and our gift account to be able to absorb other costs.
Oh, great.
So I've been absorbing the transportation and the lunch. We've been cooking the lunch here.
Okay.
So I've been absorbing those costs just to get these trips kind of rolling.
Okay.
Get the interest up.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, so I do have one more. So the source of the thirty thousand dollars that we're going to fund this from?
No.
No.
No, it's 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 to allow us to take in money from people outside.
The participants that want to go on the trips will be paying.
There's no, there's no, uh, no expenditure, right, there's no.
Well, it's the people attending. So every dollar that comes into the town goes in the general fund unless there's a statutory vehicle for it to go somewhere else. So, you know, water revenues, revolving funds, you know, there's, there's a lot of different gift accounts. But unless there's a statutory mechanism for it to be received somewhere else, it have, you know, goes in the general fund. So so there's no mechanism right now.
Right.
I have a gift account right now that, you know, our programs, we we suggest a donation. If they want to give a donation, otherwise I absorb the cost.
But but if she's going to take in like sixty dollars on attendee and then have the town pay the North Shore Music Rep. or Theater instead of the individuals paying directly, there's got to be a vehicle, an accounting vehicle for the town to pay that. So it's it's just paying it from the fees that you as the attendee paid, it's not coming from, so it's not something we're funding for your question.
And then and that's, that's why under the column amount, if dollars too, it's, and it's, for that reason, yeah. We we always ask, just so you know, we always ask this for us, because a lot of times the warrant, you discuss the warrant, but it's not necessarily clear how we're, the, where the money's coming from. So in some cases, obviously it's free cash and sometimes it's from a stabilization. And then the one we like the least is reasonably appropriate. So anyway, anyways, it, good.
Thank you.
I I think we're good to go.
Yes.
On this one.
Yeah, make a motion to be set, draft article number nineteen to provide for the council on aging to establish a revolving account with a limit of thirty thousand dollars.
For this session, come on favor.
That was on nineteen?
Yes.
Provisional nineteen.
Provisional nineteen, and and then for the provisional twenty, it's just the book side of it, right? So you would take up.
Make a motion to approve article twenty, set the maximum for receipts and expense council aging. This one, if we want.
Thank you, all favor.
Hi.
Hi.
So Dan, did you want to take us through our motions and then we can vote? So you you can just, you can just do what Chris said on each of those two, if you don't mind.
I don't think I can understand that.
No, no, but James already has recorded it, so you can just tell James that we're making the same motion that Chris made.
James, we'd like to make the same motion that Chris made for article nineteen and article twenty.
Thank you.
You might want to vote on this stuff, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we are, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on each article nineteen, is there a vote, all in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous, we're nothing, and for article twenty, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We've been in the right.
Yes, I second that, you didn't hear it.
I don't. So so. So rationales, who's going to write the rationales on the council on aging?
Don't set her, so thank you.
Dan will.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. And there's no sunset on this.
Correct.
These things just go, right?
Yeah, they're reauthorized every year.
Right, thank you.
Let me go with the police, um, part of this.
Oh, yeah.
Unless unless Bob insists on going, but I hit a plank, I don't know. They weren't that.
What do you think, what do you guys want to do?
No, 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 I, I.
I figured they'd hopefully have to get around.
So what?
We've got eight, nine and ten are all brought forward by there.
Yeah, so let's, let's go to Mike. Because Bob lost his opportunity, I gave him the opportunity. Can you just? Mike, can I do?
It's one week, so we're starting with number eight, which is the police fire audio recording. The twenty five thousand for the police fire audio recording playback in our cabinet equipment.
If if it gets to it, if someone wants to see any documentation behind it, Angus, Angus would. So just remember that. Thank you, sorry.
Yes. Okay, so good evening, we're looking to replace this equipment. This is recording equipment that we have received in the past from the state that's located in our dispatch center, it's used by police and fire to record emergency telephone calls, emergency radio transmissions, and radio transmissions that come in from various sources. The state's been paying for this a hundred percent since we started the Public Safety Building in two thousand and three. They are, they've decided that they're going to put it on the towns now and the cities because they've been using them more for their own benefit, records, retentions, public records requests for audio pertaining to car accidents, fires and forth. So I did put in sort of in my narrative in here that we are also going after some grant funds as well. I just heard back from the state, we should have an answer hopefully before town meeting. So this amount of money is to buy the equipment, but we're still looking for funding through the state, through state number one to offset the cost. And this is everything we'd need, it's, you know, it's basically a standalone server. Computer server.
But the gravity from the state now on program, if 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 that was successful, but if you from the state now on.
Yeah, I get the feeling that they recognize that this change affecting community cars a little bit more than some of the bigger cities that have more money to to spend.
Do you have any AMVs or license on cost for the field area?
Yeah, so we, we went through all of that. We could certainly absorb that, I believe, in our expense, expenses for the areas. But most of the costs are the upfront costs just to get the asset to make life.
And how long, is there a life cycle length for the equipment?
We're saying about ten years.
Well, the, the, the recurring fees for this, a few hundred dollars, a couple, a couple.
Yeah, so a majority of them were upfront server fees, like Microsoft fees, like licensing.
Okay.
But Rick's asking, how how big are the recurring ones, Mike? Are you going to run it, like down, down the road, are you going to say, whoops, you know, we.
We probably need more money.
Yes, but we have a warranty software maintenance fee that's on the third page that we'd be looking into. But that's, it's under three thousand dollars.
And that's a, a one time or an annual fee?
That's going to be for the, so this would be a one time fee and then there's options to go with additional services.
Yeah.
We're, we're hoping, we initially sent the request to the state asking for hardware. We thought it'd be fair that the state provide funding for the hardware. They came back to me and said, give us the whole package, we want to see the total cost and then we'll make a decision on what we're going to fund.
Yeah, so we, you know, all of these things tend, can tend to accumulate over the years, that's the reason for your question. So it, sometimes it gets hard to think of them as benign over time, you know, they, they, they. Think of them as benign over time. You know, they, 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 they can start accumulating. And they can put pressure on departmental budgets, but on the other hand, the equipment is the equipment quite often.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just, I, you know, what is it, you know, it may be, you know, if there are other. If there's an application of similar recurring fees and.
Yeah, yeah, your department gets squeaked. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
This is not a capital item?
Uh, I haven't thought of that. It's, uh. It's not something that's, uh, it's in the capital program. And I think if you look at the different expenses, a lot of different items that total up to. Uh, the twenty-four thousand in the quote.
So, um, what's the source of the funds?
Uh, this would be proposed from free cash.
Free cash, so this is from free cash. And of course, you know, if it was capital, it might just come from stabilization. I mean, so.
Anything from stabilization, I, I would have brought through now.
I'm just curious. I mean, there's licensing fees that obviously not.
There, there, there's, there's unclarity surrounding what needs to go through capital versus what goes through the other process. I guess, I agree with that. It's like, but on, on this type of, uh, item, it's actually time and two, right? So the other thing is, we probably are better off just getting it cause we're gonna pay it one way or the other. I had a question. Um, I, I know in the past we've had some discussions surrounding, uh, the, uh. Cable fees being used for technology. Is, is there, what's the range of use of the, the cable fees?
It's really public education on governmental, um.
Well, you know, I mean, it's police and fire governmental. I mean, I know what you're saying. It's, it's like. You know, it, so I would just always, it, it's, it's like. At, at one point is that. Cable fund gonna be useful to some of this stuff?
Yeah, I'd say that's interesting thought.
I mean, imagine if you would, that. Fairly good accumulations and, and the cable fees.
How's that wanna get released in use of?
Yeah, cable of hydro element. Right, but, but, but I'm, I'm saying.
I think of course one of the two, look.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, cause, cause to get to these, like, like imagine if you would, that one of those. Chris, dear, to answer your question, I think occasionally they have concrete needs that have been filled, but it's left still some money there. Rick raised the issue of. Yeah, well, so Rick raised the issue of what about all the support that goes to this technology? Chief is gonna absorb some of that, but on the other hand, you know, there's only so much you can absorb without you having to come back and ask for an increase. So I think we should just look at that as potentially maybe useful in certain areas, including fire and police.
Hey Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, out of curiosity, do you know if there is like cloud-based solutions for that? Cause just everything, uh, with, uh, cybersecurity stuff today. If you're not in the IT business, it seems like keeping a server can be a little bit risky at times.
Yeah, so we looked at three different options and again, we were trying to get ahead of the states. They really dropped this on us at the last minute. There are some options, but it's a lot more expensive. Um, we're running into that too on the, um, on the police side with TASER and body camera discussions. There's great technology. It's pennies on the dollar for the town to buy. But they truly get it on the surface side of things, where the cloud's towards.
But you're used to dealing with the, uh, security threats. Even with the current equipment, you have to be conscious of that.
Yeah, so this would be an independent, it wouldn't be tied into our network, or it would be a standalone. Uh, there was an option that we looked at, which really didn't even come close to anything that we currently do or would do. Was another twenty thousand dollars.
And you might find by going into the cloud that you're asking now and someone else's service that will. They wanna feel good at their security. So, I mean, what, what the chief's been dealing with, that ain't cracking my mind, but. For years and years, the, all you guys in, in the nine eleven stuff have had to worry about. Uh, making sure that you're rock solid for security.
Yeah, public safety, municipal government, we're all sort of, uh, you know, we've got on a regular basis. The, um, the other thing we're looking to do too is. We recently inserted our new computer server at the station. So we're looking at integrating the, uh, the backup that is. Uh, the recording backup, which is four thousand, roughly four thousand dollars in this quote. Uh, we're looking at the potential of tying that into our current server. That would offset that cost and then sort of back to the reoccurring fees. Uh, we have the nine and one support incentive grant, which. We can't really do much about just yet until we actually have the product. We can get reimbursed through that avenue as well. So there's a whole, it's about three different angles we're looking at here for the, for the funding of this particular.
So Chief, just a couple more questions on. So there's like a twenty-one hundred dollar annual support fee.
Yeah.
Right. And then there's a thirty-nine hundred dollar one-time integration fee to your existing system. Is that what that is? It's on the next page, I think.
The thing on page three, um, it breaks down the extended warranty for years two through six. Which with the NAS backup, um, would be twenty-five, sixty-three per year.
Is this replacing an existing warranty for your current equipment?
It's, uh, so the current equipment is under the warranty of the state. So they maintain it over. Yeah, so we're, we're now bringing in this cost and, um, and looking to replace it every ten years.
We were here, Mike, earlier. A few minutes ago, about a grant for, you said the body cameras. Any of this equipment pertaining to that, is that gonna be a whole other series of?
That's probably gonna be a discussion for the springtime. Uh, we were going, uh, the sergeant and I were going back and forth on, on what. The grant would actually provide us for, um.
I thought the grant was for the equipment, but you were gonna need servers potentially. I didn't know if these could accommodate the same thing or. If at this point went to a larger server, an incremental number might accommodate a, a future anticipated need.
Yeah, we, we currently have our network server, which is housed at the public safety building for police and fire. Um, that has adequate space. We just, when we start talking about multimedia recordings, it's a lot, lot of space.
A lot of times you don't wanna be.
Well, I wanna come back in the spring and have them looking to get a whole other set of servers to take the, the store, throw the video off the body kingdom. If we could upgrade this either to serve them out, I want some music for.
Yeah, yeah, that looks like we're gonna be, um, cloud-based and that's just sort of a trend.
So, Rob, you started to dig something. I had to think what you were saying was that combining the two.
It isn't always the, the solution you want anyway. You're, you're anticipating that everything should be combined into one server that's not all. This is really more about a standalone system, running its own course. So. Uh, I, you know, I, I, I hesitate to, to say that it's automatic that you should get everything. Housed in the same place.
Yeah, and that's how it is now within the state's equipment. It's, it's just standalone. We have access to.
And there's reasons for it.
And one last question, the, the last integration up there for ten grand, is that needed?
That, that we're not, that was an option and it's a system that we wouldn't use. They just added on there to try that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the rapid SOS integration. Yeah, that's, that's not part of, uh, what we're looking to. That was an optional. What they, they recommended it, but it's not anything that we'd ever use.
Okay. And the, the tie-in, so the, the cloud system for body cams would be totally different. It'd have its own recording storage.
Yeah, that would be, we would be funding that access to store to the cloud. And to access through the cloud.
The data requirements probably might, this is telephone calls, right?
Telephone call versus like video.
And I imagine, and this is not an issue with frontwards now, but I imagine an advantage of. Of using the cloud there is that if you need to up your storage, you don't have to get a new server. You just up your storage in the cloud. Or just, you know, get, you know, get another few terabytes or whatever.
Yeah, they're probably connected to the cloud. Anyone just to get the data from the.
Really, it's, it's, it's standalone dock that just goes right to the network, it's right to the cloud, dumps, and then it's ready to go.
What, you have questions?
Motion if you want. Make a motion to approve temporary article number eight, so it's something twenty-eight thousand dollars for the police and fire recording.
And on our side, anybody wanna make any motions?
I'll make the motion to Jim.
Right.
We'll replicate what Chris said, for temporary article eight.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, who's gonna do the rationale on this? Um, does anybody wanna specialize in the police and fire?
One question about sunset.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, so, good, thank you. We, we do rationales and we do sunset, uh, as two of our things. Uh, is there a sunset on this? It would be this fiscal year, I would presume.
You expect it to be fully perfect for three?
Okay, two years. So two years means we're twenty, twenty-five? Twenty-five is two years.
Yeah, this will be at twenty-five.
Actually, that's a year and a half. It's, it's a year and a half.
Well, we do it by two years.
Give like a June.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, what we do.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, no, I understand. I'm just saying that he wants the full two years, so I don't know.
How many months are you gonna take to get this one to play?
So we were told that it would be about eight weeks to get the equipment. Then a few weeks out from the other schedule side. Whatever is.
Can you, can you live with June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Hope that's perfect. Thank you.
We'll do that. We'll do twenty twenty-five. I, I take the point. Yeah, you said two years. Yeah, so, right, so it could have been that long, but by golly, it can't be that long. Anyway, so. You'll do, thank you very much. The reason I ask is. Ross, Ross is doing that. One thing that we'd like to do, so for instance, I'm gonna volunteer to do the water rationale. I did all the water rationales. Uh, it's nice to have, have people try to, like, you guys do this yourself. It's nice to have people focusing on a department. And we have public safety, fire and police. It'd be nice to have someone that serves as a point to that. Doesn't mean that it has to always go that way, but that's why I ask. So you wanna go into nine now?
Yep.
Thank you, Steve. I got.
Uh, okay, so this is a replacement of some health and safety equipment that we use. Uh, we are looking to replace two, what are referred to as four gas meters that we use in the field. Uh, one would be a primary and then the second one would be a backup. We're also looking at single of gas meters that would be placed in, uh, on our medical bags. That are in two of our vehicles that respond to, um, medical emergencies. And those would be individual meters to, um, identify the presence of carbon, um, monoxide and hydrogen cyanide. Oftentimes we go to medicals and we don't realize that the air quality in the house may be, right, a question.
So how many? It says two to four gas meters. And so is it two singles?
There is a four gas meter, two.
Two, four.
Quantity of two.
Yeah, some gas meter. So two, two meters.
Yeah.
That do four gases.
Right.
And then four individual meters, two of each type of gas. So.
Six total. Alright.
It's time to look.
So when you break the rationale, whoever does it, you make sure you make those plays.
Uh, life of those absolutely depends on how well they're, they're treated in the field at times, but they're, they're rugged. Um, the ones we've had, we've had for a long time. They just can't be certified to the level where they just hold the, the tall.
So a number of years.
I mean, ten years is a piece of cake with these.
Okay.
But they have to be, um. Yeah, I think one of these.
So why is this coming before us now? Do they just recently start?
They're out, yeah, they're out long as they don't work. And now we're going into the season where carbon dioxide is, it's big.
So what, what do you encounter, um, hydrogen cyanide?
Uh, by products of burn materials, burn, chemically coated. Furniture and then building fire.
So you could enter a fire and not know that you're in danger and add one of these meters?
And we're responsible for monitoring the, the conditions while we're in there, overhauling the thing.
So this is also free cash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a service contract on these or anything?
So we're looking at, um, the product to do the certifications and calibrations in the house. Um, and there will be obviously warranty to go along with these, but no sort of.
Other questions?
We don't need canaries anymore, right? Same old earth.
Are we, are we good with questions? Any more questions on this? No?
I'm good.
Actually, I'm gonna motion to, uh. Currently number article nine, um, for, um. Quote, it's different meter for, um, uh, gas.
Second.
For seventy-four hundred dollars?
For seventy-four hundred dollars.
Alright, further discussion?
Oh, favor, I, I.
So, um, on our side of the table, any motions? Make a motion to. Repeat what, what Chris said or.
All in favor? It's unanimous?
Hey, can I make a suggestion when it comes to actually putting the article? In for, um, uh, for, you know, for town meeting consumption?
Yes.
In that, uh, two dash four gas meters to use, um.
In good form.
Number four for one and, and written word for two for the others, where, you know, somehow mix that up so that. So we don't go through ten minutes to explain.
Explain, right. But, no, wait a minute, is that twelve meters now or?
Is this, uh, six thirty, twenty-four?
You say yes to that?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four? And, um, so who wants to do the rationale? That would be great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So we're done on this side of the table?
Yeah.
Next.
Can I give you a heads up quick about getting rude? I don't know, when you put the booklet together, Ross is gonna be the person doing it. He did last.
We'll, we'll get to.
Don't oververt him with writing rationales, cause when he gets to the book, uh, you.
I would, uh, right, that's true. So you're shut off. To that end though, I really did appreciate, you know.
Go through the test program?
Alright, moving on.
Yeah, moving on. Thank you. So we're at ten now. Game control, let me just.
That was, uh, one, two, four.
Yeah, twenty-four, yes, twenty twenty-four. June thirty, they're all June thirty. It's a convention.
So number ten, uh, chief, this year as well, this is for the, uh. Uh, the speed model, yeah.
Go back, yeah.
So this is for traffic safety equipment, um, which certainly the, it's two things. One is a speed trailer. Um, that has been brought in for several, um, different reasons throughout town. We used to have, it's almost like a dolly that was used. To mount throughout town, uh, to monitor speeds and to also capture data. Um, so this is looking, we're looking at, um. Buying a, a speed trailer, which would be towed behind our crew. Um, and then it would be placed at a location in town, it would be secured, chained in a locker. Um, if anybody's driven through Brooklyn on Main Street through the speed sign, they will flash any lights. Um, so we're looking to buy that and I'm also looking to, um, purchase some pedestrian, pedestrian signs that go on the roadways. Uh, we had those a long time ago. Most of them have either been damaged or no longer really able to. Sort of resurrect. Um, so I'm looking at having some of those to temporarily mount in different locations throughout town. And also down on Bachelor Street at Action Code, um, I think it'd be. and also down on Bachelor Street at Action Cove. I think it'd be important to have one in the middle of the roadway, even though there's no, I believe there's a crosswalk, but slow pedestrian ahead and something to that. So the fifteen thousand dollars is the combined cost of not only to give two options for trailers and the speed signs.
Which options are we talking about, the trailers? Are they important to us?
No. Basically, one's more than they have said.
Okay. Well, we probably should know which one you call it.
So I prefer the MPH Industries, which is the first one.
Yeah.
And what's nice about both of these is they actually have internal memory that will give us a lot of data of time of day, will give graphs, time of day, speed counts, all sorts of information that'll be helpful for sort of organizing how we, how and where we patrol.
And also volumes as well.
Volume. So this is great stuff, because these questions come up all the time.
Yeah.
What's the price on this one, the MPH?
A thousand one hundred? No, that's the other one.
Seventy, good.
Excuse me?
Seventy-one hundred.
Yeah.
The one you prefer is seventy-one hundred.
Seventy-one.
That's a stupid answer, he's got a whole breakdown of all of them.
Yeah, okay.
Basically, units forty-seven.
Solar powered, so the old one had a battery to charge it, we had to bring it back to the station, charge it for seven days, get it back out.
What I'm getting at is, what are we asking for here, chief? You know, you've got two choices, one's more expensive than the other, what actually are we asking for here? You're asking for seventy-one hundred plus the pedestrian sign, is that what you're asking? How much of pedestrian sign?
So if you look at the last page, there's a quote, so each sign is, the ones I'm looking at are portable base, which are at four hundred and sixteen dollars per minute.
And how many units?
And looking at eight.
So about thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred. So are you really asking for ten thousand four hundred, or, you know, I mean, we're by the time we go to town meeting, we've really gotta be explaining eight things. So what are we looking at? It looks like it shouldn't be fifteen, it should be twelve.
Okay.
How many, how many crosswalk signs do you want?
Looking at eight.
Eight.
So that's eight times.
Four hundred, three thousand.
No, there.
What?
Each one is eight hundred, isn't it?
No.
No, forty, four, four sixteen.
What's three ninety-nine ninety-five then?
That's the chief one.
Oh, okay, so this is a two.
So I, and just to, just so you know, and I put eight times four hundred and eleven, I came up with thirty-two hundred dollars. I went up to thirty-three hundred, actually, I gave him extra money, seventy-one hundred. So Angus, I'm just saying that, you know, if the chief wants, and we don't, we haven't discussed what we want, but if the chief wants seventy-one hundred plus thirty-three hundred, I just assume we talk about that amount of money rather than a different, you know, something.
I think the fifteen would probably cover the more expensive, right, as an option?
Mike. Yeah, I was assured that both are available, both are, the prices are not going to change, but there's always that.
Yeah, I think it's good to build in some.
Right, but how much, how much? Three thousand dollars, I mean, you know.
Well, he's not gonna spend it if he doesn't need it, right? Yeah, I mean, you can make, you can change the motion on the floor and go, no, I'd rather, I'd rather have the cushion, yeah, in the article.
No, but here's what I'm reacting to. We should know which one is gonna be both, because we're gonna discuss a specific item, that's what I'm getting at. So the warrant can remain at fifteen, I don't care about that, but I wanna know which one he wants.
I think it's parallelistic, go with the number fifteen if you're gonna be needing eleven, the taxpayer'd jump on that every time. So I guess my question is, eleven grand gonna do it, Mike?
Or twelve, or thirteen.
Yeah.
But just, just to my point, more specific is better, so.
Why is it like the MPH versus the Sopper?
Just, I've talked to different departments that have both, and they seem to be more positive.
Using our program.
You do the deploy, or, you know, you do the download, more user current.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with twelve thousand?
Yes, okay. We previously talked about these trailers more relative to Ash Creek Swamp.
Correct.
So I think that's what brought it up, the usefulness of it. There's no ability for enforcement with these, right? Not like you can take a picture and write it, take it, it's just information.
This is to just rely on people.
The same with the data that's collected, there's no imagery collected, it's just gonna be, you know, numbers and graphs and.
Put on the other hand, from standpoint of Horace Bennett, if there's one coming in that to Ash Creek Swamp, and there's the patrol car sitting on the other side of Ash Creek Swamp, and, you know, somebody's recorded on radar going you know, ten miles or fifteen miles, not an hour, over the speed limit, and you know that they just passed a sign telling them, and, you know, clear on certain terms, that they're going too fast, that.
Can you necessarily?
You don't have to cut it in slack.
It's all I D E, it's all I D investigation.
Right, you can, you can, you can write and take them off.
Yeah, and the officers, right on your job, have plenty of tools and.
So I think we're all, well, so we have a discussion. Well, one of the things I'll ask, you'll assure us that every time you put one of these things out, there'll be a sign telling people what their target speed is? In other words, you'll.
The image shows it on there.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I know, I know, I want assurances that we're not, right, that's a they move it and.
I mean, I was, because, say, if it goes to Ash Creek Swamp, it's a lower speed limit than most other places, so.
I'm sure they have an extra sign.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy, I assume it's easy, just to.
But what I'm saying is, my vote in favor is dependent upon an assurance from the chief, that we're not gonna be like Groveland and have a flashing light at you where you don't know what the hell the speed is supposed to be. That's what I'm asking. So you'll, you'll always put that out with with the appropriate speed in there.
Yes, that, that's adjustment.
That's right, and to Rick's point, you will actually have one that's twenty miles per hour.
Oh, yes.
My, my car would tell me.
It's a white, it's a white, right.
No, 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 I.
Well, my car tells me, when I'm, they flash a red at me all the time, because it says, here's the speed limit, if they have, here's the speed limit, here's the thing.
Does it change from red in, or is it always red?
Speed is white, my speed is red.
So.
But that, that's not an option, where you can't move it and have it, like, talk to outer space and know that it's in a twenty mile an hour speed zone.
Yeah, oh, no, we.
You have to be on the million, yeah, okay.
And you wanna show that anyway. So anyways, do you guys have anything, since we've.
Yeah, I wanna make a.
Got off the track here.
Okay.
I make a motion for providing a temporary article pack, it's on twelve thousand dollars for purchase of a speed trailer and pedestrian signage, eight minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 And what was the amount of money? Free cash? Okay, on our side, Anne, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, the, what Chris said. Is that cool, Jim, to?
I think it is.
So, and, great, and all in favor?
One question.
Yes.
Sunset?
Yes, I was just gonna ask that, thank you. Chief, twenty twenty-four? Thank you.
And that was a second.
And that's. Thank you. So, and rationale, Ross, thank you.
Are you gonna vote?
Oh, yeah, we voted.
Yeah, we did.
We already announced vote. Yeah, look, if he wants to slow down, okay, that's fine, we can do that, yeah.
I think it's great to get one of the signs that we have, because, you know, the other day I was driving over to, to go paddle in Ipswich, and in a half mile distance, I went by three different flashing signs, and now I don't know if they're all in rally, and they have been two in rally, and one in, I guess it would have been Ipswich, and they were all flashing when you passed.
But you didn't, you didn't know the speed on you.
You know what? I drive so slow.
So anyways, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, there was, there was, why do I'm out there, and it'll be great back then.
Yeah, I think, I think, I actually like being reminded, I just don't like being told I'm doing something wrong without knowing what exactly it is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what they do in Groveland, it's like, how fast?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I know when I'm over, I don't even know how much I'm over, okay. Anyway, so, do we have any other warrant articles to take up? I think we're done.
No.
You're the chief.
The chief.
Not with the chief, we're done.
Then there's.
There's a computer one?
Vehicle computer.
Yeah, what?
This was from a grant, this was, it should be on the package.
Yeah.
With not a warrant. So we just, well, I guess background on this, we put in, we requested a grant earlier in the summer for computer
Right.
technology, and the grant to the state is for to address local law enforcement intervention, intervention suppression, for any needs, specifically for funding computer technology. I put in for, let's see, the grant from you, sorry, didn't bring that with me, but roughly thirty-one thousand dollars to replace our computers that are in our cruisers. Again, it's technology that's quite old and quite out of date. This grant would be to replace that equipment and support replacing all the equipment in the cruisers. The special article I requested was to have that funding source to go along with the grant that we submitted in for.
In case the grant's not.
In case it failed, or we at least had the money to support whatever's kinda coming into the state, their reimbursement for.
So that's not on this list being tonight, is it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, am I coming back for that?
Was there article request one?
Yes.
Who was that?
Instead of part of the package we sent?
Yeah, I can.
Well, Angus, you can cycle through on this with Mike.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so. Right, but you can, you can take it out from your end, we don't need to do anything tonight on the.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Well done.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. So what is, I expect things later, if we kind of work three things on that other article?
I, I think you need to go through, like, regular process.
More about it. Okay.
You know, yeah, because you don't know, I mean. Yeah, I think it'd be premature to take it up. We've got weeks.
I mean, we discussed it, what were you?
We did, yeah, we threw.
A grant, it's a branch, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, what's next?
Angus?
Yeah, Bob, it's Bob.
Reduction in the FY twenty-four water operating budget by seventy thousand.
Now, just to explain that, though. This is an amendment to their budget expense item, so it really doesn't have dollars attached to it as it relates to town's Patrick.
Correct.
It's giving them the reduction.
Well, the reduction, okay, so how's that work?
We've already moved tax rate. Well, you don't affect the, actually, the tax rate, because it's water.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's what I'm getting, yeah, okay. So, because I'm anticipating David's first question. So seventy thousand comes off of the expenses. So go ahead, Bob, it's up to you, your own.
Well, it should be really short and sweet, I mean, everybody knows our budget was produced a little bit over what it should have been. We need to drop about seventy thousand dollars to get it down to where it's acceptable to the department revenue. And the only place we have in our budget to do that is the Newbury Fort Water contingency, because we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars there. And by taking seventy out, that'll probably leave a sum in the neighborhood of ninety thousand, which should be pretty close enough to finish the year.
With this rain.
With this rain, and we're going into, this, I wish it's a slow season now, and all that kind of stuff, so we should be fine. But if we're not, we can always go to town meeting in April and boost up a couple bucks out of unreserved or something.
But I'm assuming that you're well under your plan right now in terms of.
I don't know what's supposed to, why it was, July, we spent fifteen thousand. I'm not sure what August was, but still, if you bring that out, then with the lower one, we should be in great shape.
So is it because of the rain that we found that you're that far in budget, or was it over budgeted to begin?
Well, it was over budgeted, Mike over budgeted it, but also with the weather we've had, where it's been so wet and so rainy, we haven't needed to ride that much water.
Right, and also, you, you, you had a lot of things going on at once at the time, Mike was budgeting.
Yeah.
So, so, so there were, there were, there were things that could have led to more, that turned out not to be more, so, so it's, it's, it's several different factors. From my perspective, this is like a great way to deal with what would have to be done, and it's appropriate, it's entirely appropriate, it's not a, it's not a smoke and mirror, but fortunately, you had that because we had to make the cuts anyways, no matter what, the cuts have to be made.
A little trickier if it was like last year.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Last year was a lot trickier.
Yeah.
This year, I think we're great.
You, you would have been starting to take away money from stuff that's in there that probably needs to be done. Well, you gotta remember, a lot of the, Bob, if I'm speaking on a turn, let me know, but a lot of the water budget is, there's a lot of stuff in there that can be done one year or the next year, and, and so, so Mike was making sure that it was adequate to take care of stuff. And.
This particular issue.
This particular, he really did that, and that was done on purpose, and was spot to do, but, but we ran to the flip side of you know, it's good to have that in place, luckily, we can just take away from the Newbury Fort Water, as Bob says.
Right.
Come springtime, you'll know whether the seventy worked or not, and then we can come back.
Yeah.
And by then, by then, we might have a different rate structure anyway, so.
So let's get with it, we'll get some new rate structures.
Yeah, so this is all actually very good for my part.
Any questions?
So, guys, you've been asked a direct question by the chair. So we know that there. No, okay, I, I'm sorry, I was nothing. I let my guard down, so, so, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I approve, I moved that we, uh, software approved. What is currently article four, and it'll say the thing, reduce budget line in Form four forty-five oh twenty-seven. And they already approved the full year twenty-four water budget, and revise that down to three seventy-five, three hundred seventy-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars.
We need to save the seventy thousand now, or?
That'd be more convenient. Seven, the number.
Right.
As opposed to, like, the eight way number, so yeah, the whole number of what you want it to be, because what?
You have to state when it should be.
Yeah.
Right, which one is it?
Okay, I'm just, it's not like an article request that's.
Yeah, it's gonna be on the table too.
Well, the article, the draft article request doesn't reference seventy thousand.
Yeah, the draft article request, I was just reading from the draft article request, it's just, oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading.
That's the article, the article request that's seventy.
I see.
Right, 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 right. Draft request is seventy.
Okay, so which equals seventy thousand.
Right, there you go.
Make everybody. Alright, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, on our side of the table?
Make a motion to, do what Rick said?
Including.
Without the X.
Without all the, you know, intermediary and stuff, just to reduce the budget by seventy thousand dollars, or whatever is appropriate, depending on changes.
Yes.
Second, do we have second to this? All in favor? It is unanimous, and this has no sunset date because it goes to a specific year.
You're correct.
And I'm writing the warrant.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright.
That was good.
Yeah, it was.
Angus, what's queued up next, you know?
You know, you can take it from the top.
Let's take it from the top.
Ask a question? Is Jenny here just for the one, because you just have.
Just, just for the final.
I don't know, she's, she, there's some other stuff she's here for too.
Okay.
There's, there's, Town Council's actually listed on probably the last one we're gonna get to till then.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's the only one she's here for, take one off purpose, okay?
I'm here, Helen, I.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's.
Bye. Okay, so Angus is
So we have, yeah, we got a a couple of the closed budget amendments. A couple of these had in the earlier draft sent around on September first had been listed as separate articles. And in this document, the select board meeting the following Monday was where a couple of these are uh can can just as well be funded out of the operating budget as articles and creating an article, it's a separate uh line of the charter accounts. It it creates an accounting over overhead and it's small amounts of money. What I'm referring to specifically are the select board laptops and the uh incremental costs.
But also you can you can lose historical information by not getting it this way. This way
Well, you can, right.
This way
Yeah, so it makes it a more accurate
Yeah.
Budget because you are now, you know, reflecting that, you know, the the IT budget if approved would uh reflect that addition of sixty four hundred dollars, which is really an operating expense, not like a special expense. So yeah.
Sometimes when you're warrant, but you actually can remember, forget that you gave the pocket and rack a certain amount of money that really should be in their operating budget. That's what we think. So that's all I'm getting at.
So that uh resulted in, you know, slightly smaller list of articles, but the reality is we were just taking some of those and batching them together into a single article. If it ends up uh if if the either the select board is thinking on vote on any of these end up being different, you know, I would then recommend let's break it down as separate articles so we don't get into these messy rationales where, you know, items A, B, and D are recommended, C is not, so but but it seemed to be cleaner to uh propose it as a single set of budget amendments, so I'll just take it through uh in order listed. Uh first one is a proposed uh increase in the uh IT budget in the town manager line by sixty four hundred dollars twenty three, six six thousand four twenty three. That would be for the purpose of buying three uh laptops to the select board. Uh we uh basically Rick's uh machine died, uh we bought a new machine. Um that's, you know, we we carry some contingency in the IT budget, but not enough to absorb, you know, free laptops that weren't uh anticipated. So since the laptops were all purchased at the same time, it makes sense to replace them all in the same year. So the proposal is to increase the IT budget by six thousand four hundred twenty three dollars for the purpose of buying three replacement laptops to the board.
And then so for next year, will that stay in the IT budget or will that drop?
No, well, so we do that every every year. You know, I work with Jake as our IT consultant and we we work to kind of forecast what machines we think need to be replaced in the subsequent year.
Uh so the item itself may not be in the budget, but the historical expenditure, you could you could theoretically actually uh have a plan where you're spending X per year
Right.
Covering everything over period.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh so uh why don't I present all of them and then if the recommendation is the same for all of them, it could be a single vote if if there ends up being a you know, different recommendation, it could be broken apart.
Angus, did we get in not in trouble, but um Casey had a problem with something. We did this a couple of years ago.
You gotta like it. It's a totally legitimate thing to do.
Well, it's the reason she doesn't like it is because town meeting can say, we don't like this one, we do like this one. It makes it can make the vote in town meeting very sloppy.
Yeah, yeah, we did it in twenty twenty. That was the COVID year and there were a lot of adjustments to the budget that fall. That was very unusual. Uh uh you know, I I uh
I just don't want it to be sloppy in town meeting. It's easy just to break
Can can Angus, can can it be handled in the same way the operating budget is where you would announce all four?
Yeah, for all, yeah, I think if I think that's how it was done back in the fall.
Personally, personally, I I really think that this is a good approach and to have one warrant article where we cover the because this will, I'm sure, occur in future years. This should be a
Yeah, it'd be easier to track it. One one adjustment, one article that covers all adjustments. And all you do is you batch, I mean, currently have one line out of budget and then at special time meeting, you have one adjusting article if there has to be one. And it just seems to me it makes it easier to to aggregate stuff in the future.
And even to the and even to discuss about it because it's just like presenting operating budget. So I I'm kind of in favor of doing this. And Casey will get used to this. She's very good.
Oh, I don't think You'll hear about this later on.
I've already heard about it.
Okay, there you go.
Uh but it's totally legitimate.
No, I agree with the message.
You know, so uh uh and and the fact is, everything listed here was was not only not uh you know, anticipated at the time the budget was presented, it really wasn't knowable. I mean, sure, we could have said, okay, these three machines are are about due for replacement, but you know, we didn't, so um uh the next one, these are the uh proposed revisions to the uh Board of Resident Chartered shall reduce expenses. This is something to do with the uh proposing or they not propose the, in fact, election that will take place in January for Whittier. Maybe Jim, if you want to just tell people what's going on with that, are people aware of the Whittier proposal to build a new high school?
So the way it works is they're asking approval from the Mass School Building Authority. Um that approval will probably come be coming in December. If they don't get the approval, it's off anyway, so it doesn't matter. If they do get the approval, um they plan on holding a district-wide election, not a town-wide election, but a district-wide election. Meaning every town in the Whittier School District has to have election on the same day. Um according to Mass General Law, it has to be within a certain time period. It can't be the the thirteen hour day that we're used to for an election and that max is eight hours by Mass General Law. Um the other option would be they have to go to every single individual town, get passed by town meeting or their city council. Um and it has to be a hundred percent approval that way. Uh this district election
Meaning eleven out of eleven.
Have to say
Uh would have to.
But then then um this way, it is a majority vote by the district. So fifty point one point zero zero one percent say yes, they want it, it passes, not fifty percent in each town, fifty percent district-wide. So if it was overwhelmingly in favorable favor, it's often way could pass on that alone, or if it was very against and every other town's in favor, it might have a different outcome.
So we've been uh invited to a meeting, I don't know, what, six months ago or so, the one that you you and I went to um that the uh Whittier superintendent hosted to kind of present the project. We've been hearing about it for a couple of years, but that was the first really big meeting where they presented conceptual plans. They talked about the work they're doing with the MSBA and getting the state funding. At that time, we expected they were gonna do the eleven different elections and and I remember, you know, Rick joined into that meeting and I remember, you know, we and our counterparts in some of the other towns that had had it were were kind of like, it's a pretty high hurdle. Yeah, that's a very high hurdle. Ten out of eleven could pass, the eleven votes down, and you do not have a new school. And especially keeping in mind that due to the cost of this, uh some of the uh towns, it would trigger a prochna override.
It's it's a tremendous cost.
Tremendous.
You ask if they know about it, do they know the cost?
Right, and that and this is well, but 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 I will say I didn't always put into the materials here was on the election costs. We did not put in all of the materials on like the presentation. I'm happy to share that information. I don't want to muddy the water. We have to have the election, whether you support the expenditure or not, so I didn't want to bog down the packet with all that. But we're happy to share all that, just so you are aware of of what's going on, to the extent we know. We don't know all the costs, but um but anyhow, so they did, you know, sometime later, I don't know, month, a couple of months later, they decided to go this different route of basically the district-wide vote. I I think that was a for their, you know, I think that was a smart decision from their part in terms of trying to get done what they're trying to get done. Um uh but it does, it is an additional election and uh when we put together the, or when Jim put together the registrar budget, he does it based on specific number of elections, number of you know, uh people working, uh all those ancillary costs. So, you know, we didn't account for a fit election, uh you know, in the town of the year.
Definitely, actually, you know, be five election plus your town.
Three stuff for the year.
Yeah, that's special year, all right.
So anyhow, that's that's what you see there is the uh uh estimated cost to run that January election. So there's um
Those two lines.
Yeah, those are two.
Yeah, so the the two, the reason for two lines, uh first one for the uh salary and wages is just to pay our election workers what they um the expenses would be the ancillary costs of printing the ballots, which we have to take on, but we are reimbursed for. And that's the other thing I didn't mention. This is all fully reimbursable by the district.
Even with salary and wages?
Salary and wages, so.
Does that cover your salary too, is my question? Is it just the work? No.
No.
Well, he's souring, so he's
I I
Going for Malco.
I have to show up to work anyways.
Yeah.
Chris, it's not gonna be you're right, they should be paying us since they're gonna rob us later.
Using his time, yeah.
I I mean, I will, I will be working more than the forty hours a week in some cases, uh but luckily, this is not, it's an eight-hour election, so I can set up on the day of. It's
And there's no rolling
There's no work for it, there's no, there's no vote by mail about, so it's a very different election, so I can get it all done.
Yeah, Chris, the point is that that
There's a value to your
This is a mandate that that we we're we're chipping in on, so we're not getting reimbursed for everything.
No, uh we're we're getting reimbursed for
For certain things.
Election workers, we're getting reimbursed for programming of machines, we're getting
And they're not gonna change with the reimbursing of
Well, I do have a breakdown of what I expect the cost to be. Um which LHS is the the company that provides our service for uh pulfabs, which are the checking machines and then the actual loading machines. So um but they also do our ballot printing um and the coding of the equipment. And then uh ESNS is the automark, which is that big computer looking thing with the screen on it that voters are allowed to use for uh people with visual impairment, uh three of the vote. Um and then uh send it to send forms and cards. That's literally just the cost of mailing it to both those agencies. One is in Nebraska, the other is in Salem, New Hampshire. Um and then absentee ballots. I'm assuming it's an estimate on how many people made requests. Three hundred is a very large number. Um but I'd rather have that cost up in there than to what this, just so nobody will get nasty about it.
No, everything we spend will be reimbursable, but we need to appropriate the funds.
Yep, understood.
And then, but by far the largest amount dollar-wise is the proposed uh increase to the ethics ag uh budget. At the time, we prepared the budget in uh February, March. We have no idea obviously what the enrollment's gonna be the subsequent year. We look at historical numbers. It's been two students for a number of years. Uh you know, I know Jenny put together a breakdown of the packet of the per uh per student cost and it's substantial. So the addition of one student or in this case two is a big, big driver. You know, we talked about we could budget for three. I would prefer not to raise twenty three thousand dollars roughly from the taxpayer. You know, I'd rather budget based on
Because what what are you gonna then do? Go back and do a reduction later on? Wouldn't that be
Quite, but Right, you're
I'd rather do again.
Yeah.
You gotta get used to
So this is this is actually something we've had either on the warrant or on draft warrants. I think every year I've been here, if not every last year.
Every year, yeah.
Because every year you don't know. We don't get the confirmation uh officially. We don't get the official number till October first. So even though we know how many students are as of a few weeks ago, someone could transfer into the district on September twenty eighth. And I mean, even up to October first, that and that's in every school district statewide. October first is the magic day for the enrollment is the official number. So it's something that, you know, I've talked to prior boards. I think we just, as a matter of course, should keep a warrant article in the fall town meeting every single year for this article, whether we need it or not. Uh because uh we we don't know how many students
And make the adjustment.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Could it not happen in Whittier also? I mean, that's a variable too.
Uh no, we're actually uh assigned a portion of the overall based on the prior year's enrollment.
We know that, we know that.
Yeah, no, that's a true number.
When is the uh when is the absolute deadline when when the warrant is posted?
Exactly. Uh you're saying for like future years?
No, no, no.
Oh, so yeah, so So it's certainly better stated as October first.
Yeah, yeah. It could be, yeah, we could make the adjustment. It would be a little, you know, messy because we probably have to have I gotta thought that through.
No, no, I've gone there a little bit.
But but yeah, we, I think honestly, in that case, I think we'd be coming back in the spring to get an amendment.
But yeah.
Because as long as we pay the bill before they close out their fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
You may remember, Rick, uh I don't know Wendy and Chris. I know Chris wasn't on the board. Wendy, I'm not sure if you were, but a couple of years ago
Yeah, I
Made under under budgeted this line by a a a a couple of hundred dollars because it was to do with the buck and pork up. We're a little bit off. And so when we paid our our second bill of the year, because we're only billed twice a year by that's the time, we shorted them by, you know, a couple of hundred dollars. We said, when we're gonna go to town meeting in April, get the money and pay you that and that. So that's what we would do in practice.
This is My my concern is we never, we would never end up in a situation where we had to call a special town meeting.
No, 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 they're they're, they know we're good for it.
Well, they know where we live.
Yeah, but but I was I was looking at some old warrants the other the other a week or so ago, actually on on the water testing, because I was looking to get the same language. I pulled a warrant from like twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. This same article was on their format exact. So this is just something every year we need to understand.
And by the way, this this is the in the nature of an assessment. This is an assessment.
That's right.
So there's really, there's really no discussion debate.
That's right.
We did not take action, which we can.
Yeah, we started cash.
It it it, yeah.
Right, Jenny?
No, the state was, the state would subtract it from the cherry sheet. And so we would just have to, they would tell us that we spent that money.
Either way, we don't have to pay.
Yeah, we have to pay. So it's not really, it's not really anything that's open to debate.
Right, but a part of why I go into that detail is I do understand on the floor of town meeting, people can look at that, say, good lord, like, don't these people know how to budget? You know, and and if if they want us to start budgeting for four when, you know, it's more likely to
No.
Okay, I don't think that's
No, no.
This is the same thing the district runs up against with special needs
Yeah.
Coming in on the district.
Yeah.
And it's not known. You just don't know, so.
You don't know.
Yeah. Can I ask just two questions on this? So it works out to twenty three, five per student at this school. Roughly what is Penticat? I don't know, twelve under twenty, fifteen, sixteen?
Oh, gosh. I I don't know.
And then I can ask about Whittier. I'd just like to see the money, anyway.
Yeah, that that'd be interesting, yeah.
But now does Penticat, it's a two-step process on the budgets based on the wealth of the community and the number of students in the district. So now that we've got two that are not going to Penticat, is there a credit that comes back from Penticat?
No, because it's based on the prior year, based on October first of last year is how it's a portion.
So in essence, you're gonna pay for the overlap of the two educations.
Yeah, but you might have some other people coming into the district too.
Oh, I was gonna say, right.
I mean, it's Might be in a shop, like if those kids went to private school and now their dad's like spaghetti, it's technically no.
Because we don't know where the
This is
We don't know the game, right?
That's the thing, we don't know where they
We're we're going far a few.
Yeah, not really.
No.
It's counting for the students.
We've got an assessment in front of us. Uh I I think we should move the these four things. Guys, did you want, Wendy, did you wanna do any more discussion or?
Uh we're good, right?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I do.
I do, actually, since we are looking at considering this as a single article, I do want to bring up that I I had totally forgotten to add the help landfill monitoring. We had talked about that at our last one and I don't believe there's anything in the packet on it. This is something that
I'm sorry, we could two conversations.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So this is something that we had brought up. I think we brought it up at the last select board meeting.
I remember seeing
No, he mentioned it. It was going to be in the packet. It's gonna be coming. We hadn't seen it in the previous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So so we can decide what what to do tonight. We either, you know, we can either revise it or we can because he did actually vote to put it on the warrant. I just forgot to
How much is it?
It's six, it's six hundred dollars. So what
We made a motion that
What it is, it's the steel landfill. We pay a company a certain amount to do the testing of the ground, you know, uh you know, well, monitoring well and all that. The cost, their vendor cost went on fifty dollars a month, so six six hundred dollars for the year. The the health budget budgets that down to the dollar, there is no contingency. My feeling is
They're involved?
We couldn't do, uh no, because that's really solid waste, uh but we could just not do anything on this and come to you in May and June and do a line out of transfer. It's six hundred dollars. We brought it forward to the board just to be thorough and the board did vote at your meeting last to go ahead and add it, but then I went ahead and forgot. But my feeling is, my feeling is, let's just ignore it because I don't want to do an article request form. I just
Why can't we just put it in?
To do.
Uh can we just roll it into this?
Wait, yeah, we can. It'd be a six hundred dollar Wait, yeah, we can, it'd be a six hundred dollar increase to the steel landfill monitoring line.
Just make them all.
Yeah, I just don't know where you guys are just hearing about it, I don't wanna spring anything on anyone, but.
No, I, you, you raised.
Cause it's a small enough amount, it could be.
Small enough amount, guys, are you okay with us adding six hundred dollars as another line item to increase this, this, the project? For a percent of three, yes.
Yeah.
Dan?
Okay.
We're good with it.
Okay, that's.
So, so this thing now.
We just never know what's gonna.
I just don't know.
So, by the way, on this.
Oh, yeah, Jenny's got the.
I don't know if you wanna see that. We initially wanted an actual bill.
Or wait, can I make a motion?
Well, we can, I, I'm gonna ask one, one question, the source on this.
So all of this is raising our program?
This is all raising appropriate because of the very nature of the, the transaction, we're adding to our operating budget, which is raising appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, this is raising the profit, so we're actually spending money.
Yeah.
And, and, but the majority of it is said is an assessment way, right, or not, so, and anyways, go ahead, sorry, Chris.
Can I make a motion to approve Article Three with the full line I presented? The computers, six thousand four hundred twenty-three, registrar salaries increased for the election, sixteen hundred, registrar expenses nineteen hundred twenty. Essex, New York, Ag Tech, forty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-three, and additional for the steel landfill monitoring of six hundred dollars.
Fair.
And what line is that, do you have an idea, Jenny?
Twenty-five. Got you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Any, uh for the discussion, all favor, I, I.
So, on our side, do we have any motion?
I'll make a motion to do the same with Chris's act. Or Article Draft, Article Three.
All in favor?
Yeah.
It's unanimous? Um, I'll do the rationale on this. If you don't mind. So we.
No sunset, you're fine.
No sunset, cause it's current operating budget, so uh we will go to transfer funds for pension liability stabilization fund. Uh this is something that. Jenny and I worked on a schedule, and basically the schedule you've seen, so we've looked at the schedule, you've looked at the schedule. You're now bringing it back to us, so I'm kinda thinking we're all agreement on this unless people wanna discuss it.
Have you guys, I mean, it came to the slide board, I don't know that you guys have seen it.
All seen extensively.
Okay.
Oh, you haven't?
It, it was in, uh it was in the materials for the.
Do you want, do you wanna go over it then, Rick, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that, I, I had thought.
You know, it, I could have a thirty second.
Yeah, so can I do that, and, and Jen's here, you have some difficult questions, she'll answer those. So you may recall last year, you've had a policy, the policy is when you get a billing in from uh the retirement board. You take ten percent of that and you put it into a pension reserve account, the idea is somehow it's gonna be used to smooth out. The expenses over time, the, the thing is, the schedule was, there was a policy, but there wasn't a schedule of what we might expect. And Angus is putting that up on the board right now, and so, so the, the, the expectation is it'd be used. You'd be using the reserve at a certain point in time, so what Jenny and I constructed is the amount of money that would theoretically go in. And that's based on what they report to us, they have, they've worked numbers out all the way to twenty thirty-six. In twenty thirty-six, if you look at the twenty thirty-six, you can see that our West Newbury portion of our expense is gonna be about twenty-three thousand. Right now, it's at like eight hundred thousand, so what they're doing is they're, they're uh recapturing all, they're, they're fully funding it. They should fully fund it, right, so, so the significant thing is we break free of them in twenty thirty-six. Until twenty thirty-six, we're gonna put a certain amount of money into reserve, but then we should stop pulling it out. That was the only thing that wasn't answered last year, the pulling out, so what we wanted to do was show it not only going in ten percent, but coming out. And we've constructed it in such a manner that you can see that uh our increase. That to be raised by taxation, the increase is, is two percent each year going out. So, so that, what that means is we've stabilized it, we've made it the same consistent two percent increase every year. So, so that schedule is the schedule that we'd like incorporated into policy. In other words, you have a policy, this supports the policy, but it shows it, and we can, every year, we can update it to actual, because. Just like we just saw around Essex Aggie, things, things change. That was the only exception we had, we, we just wanted to see whether the policy actually worked and how it would be then drawn down. And, and as I said, Jenny and I worked on this, Chris and I started it like way back in, in the spring after we had. Uh you know, requested that, that we not go forward with until we had done this, that's all, so.
So what number will change that will be adjusted annually that will update this table?
Yes, yes, because.
Number.
Oh, so what happens is every year, see, do you see the um uh columns? Uh the, the, it's something I call column eight, or column six, A B C, it's, no, it's the third column over. So year, fiscal year ending, and then that one, right, so that comes from them every year, every year they update that.
Fair.
So here's what happens, we own a share of that, the share is unknown. Uh the share dropped to one, one four two last year, that's why our expense went down, it was.
And the share is based on like alternate number?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so it's a moving target, so, so we're waiting for the next year, it unfortunately doesn't come out until the fall. And it's based on January first, but it comes out in the fall, so every year, we're gonna update this to see what's happening. The short thing is, what we're really doing is we're taking from free cash and specifically allocating it to smooth this out. The real consequence of doing that is you now have less free cash. This is a good use of stabilization, so we're, we're in favor of the policy, we just wanted to be clear what we're trying to accomplish. If, if this is what actually happened, what we've done is exactly what I think the policy was intended to do, which is to smooth it out. Cause otherwise, if you look, uh we would be going up to one point two seven seven. If you look at uh West Newbury portion, right, see that, we would be going up to one two seven seven as an expense.
In about ten years.
Yeah, yeah, but, so, so what we've done is we've knocked it back to always maintaining it under one million. That's the proper use of stabilization, that, that's, that, that is the definition of stabilization. Jenny, would you, is that a fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Do you endorse the schedule?
Previously, we just use a standard percentage.
Ten percent, yeah.
Alright, so then, is your objection that it wasn't based on any one, right?
It was, the, the objection was that we didn't know the consequences, we actually ran fifteen percent.
Yeah.
And I ran, I ran so many scenarios, because you can get, you can get lost in the weeds.
It's getting too many.
Yeah, and, and I, and I had to, and some of them were just totally flexing around to see different thing. So, so we, we looked at fifteen and, and, yeah, is that what you're showing right now, yeah?
Uh, let's see, uh, yeah.
Very good standing.
Anyway, so, so the point is, the, the, the point is, is the, the, the kind of, the ten percent did work, it's just you have to see follow it. It, it can't be just, you know, it can't be just a paragraph, so anyway, that's where we ended up. So you can see it was, it was way more, is that the fifteen?
No, that's the ten, the fifteen is, is here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Smooths it to a one percent.
Smooths it to a one percent. Which didn't seem that appropriate, cause there is always inflation and all numbers, so that, that, that would mean you, see, the, 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 the theory here is. This should have been paid by people that came before us, and the more, the further out you bump it. The, the more you're putting it on people that it wasn't really because of them, so that's why we, we were happy with the ten percent. I thought it would be happy with the ten percent, so.
Alright, any further?
No.
Conversation? That's my question, I'm assuming you have no comments because you can't help with it.
I, these guys may comment all they want, I just, you know, ask them, maybe.
You gotta shoot this down?
No, I think the numbers speak for themselves, lots of numbers. Yeah, that improves the ten percent.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Article Request Number Five, uh the fund sixty-seven thousand five hundred fourteen to the pension liability stabilization fund.
This is from free cash.
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
I. Right.
Our side of the table?
Make a motion to mirror Chris's act for our.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Um, I'll write this one as well, cause I've been living this since I got IT all pissed off. I, I immediately went.
Let's not get pissed off.
No, I know, I, I started, I started working on this. So anyway.
Alright, number seven.
No, no, so the next, uh yeah, we've got the Chief of Sessa coming in Monday, he's gonna present on Article Seven. Uh so, that'll be part of the joint meeting on the evening. And so the next one for tonight is actually skipping all the way down to number sixteen, which is unpaid fiscal bills. Obviously, we try to avoid these, but uh there were a few that slipped through the crack. Uh I don't have them with me, so do you wanna just summarize what those were, there was one that was actually.
They're listed someplace.
Oh, yeah, the actual bill themselves.
Oh, oh.
So Jenny's got the actual bill.
But again, these are no choice, we just.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, so, yeah.
So the, the problem is when you go to town meetings or, it's a nine tent, so this one is. We should be as prepared for this as you can be, cause you, you, you don't want to not pay someone. I, I don't think we have a type of town meeting voted down, but uh.
Then we get a bad reputation.
I actually have been a lot. What's that?
Then we get a bad reputation in a neighborhood we don't make out there.
So Jenny, do you have, I'm just curious, what's there for?
So I do, um the Merrimack Valley class, these are from actually October twenty twenty-one. And I think uh what was happening there, or uh they were emailing an invalid um address. And they weren't, we weren't, we never received them, I don't know why, it took so long to resurface, but. They were for, um, gosh. I, I think I knew that, um, actually, I'm not sure that that is, that's a, that's a good thing. Insulated unit frame, I did vet these, um, they are actual obligations. Um, and here's the email actually from them, but.
So all three were, uh excuse me.
They were not paid.
All, all five that went to the DPW were going to the one email?
No, that's, that's.
That's very much.
Yeah. You know, can, can tell that was Brian, Brian did verify that the work was done, complete, prepared.
Now, like the reference here, that some of their emails go to spam filter, uh it's, but yeah, we didn't. I don't know until after, uh after July fifteenth, which is the statutory deadline to either expend funds or encumber funds. So if a bill comes in after July fifteenth, that is not something that anyone's aware is coming, that you get in a situation, we try to avoid it, but. You know, considering the number of bills we handle, one, one thing I would just say that this wasn't the case with any of these, but one thing that drives me nuts. Is the number of vendors who email bills, I get like eighty emails a day. And like, God forbid you take it, fortunately, I have an assistant now to like, help me track my emails, but up until.
It's one of the dumbest things.
Crazy, like I wish people would just mail bills, because we'll never miss it, but anyway.
Or at least a statement, uh send it, if you send out a statement, then you can see that they expected to be paid and you have received it.
Yeah.
That's classic Merrimack Valley, though.
So.
So anyways.
Hiller companies.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have better.
On COVID, yeah.
Which is fiscal, oh, uh.
So from previous year, it takes what, a ninety-nine vote at town meetings, is that right?
Correct.
What about from two prior years?
Takes a lot.
There's a collection.
Nine tenths in that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm actually seeing these, these do have the correct, these do have, you know, DPW director's email address. Correctly listed on the bill, you know, I mean, I'd have to go back to October twenty twenty-one to see what was going on there, but. Yeah, until a year ago, we had fifteen hour weekend for DPW and uh, and we didn't have the one we have now, we had a lot of turnover of that position. I don't know if we were short, it happened, but somehow it slipped through the cracks, uh these, these.
So are Hiller and Merrimack Valley similar in, in? Are they similar in that they were all emailing, uh is this the situation or?
I'm not sure, I haven't looked at this in a while, uh we'll have a better answer at town meeting, but I, it's honestly like.
I'm not sure if Hiller was emails or not, or mails.
So we're in agreement that you, you, you may have to, you may have, you may have to really explain to someone, cause. This is the type of thing when people pissed off, they take it out and stuff like that.
Right, I understand, right, okay.
But these have all been verified as valid, the work's been done.
Work's been done, and they definitely were unpaid. Yeah.
And was the town clerk one?
That's a bill, I forget what the exact bill was for, do you remember what the line is, what the, the item was, but. Um, I called them, when I got the, I got it in, in the mail, it said, this is like past due or whatever it was. And I called them and I said, so when was the first one sent out, and they said, oh, well, you're actually not the only person who's called us who said you didn't get the original bill. It's sort of the past due came in after, it asked it hidden after, it was, came in, when did they come in, like August, I think, I'm here to you, or?
Um, this copy isn't stamped, but, um.
I, it, it came in well after the deadline.
Right, but what, what was the date on the transaction?
Uh it was, it was an annual, sorry.
That's okay, the, it's um the one year ICP maintenance for two, um.
Pullback, yeah.
Yeah, pullbacks.
So the, there's an annual software.
Wh- what's the timing, that's all I know.
If, the invoice date is April first.
April first, yeah.
Yeah, and then we.
So, so they said to you, oh, someone else also told us that they never received, so they produced the invoices, but maybe never mailed like for. They stuck them in the, behind someone else's, or they all go for it.
Whatever, we, we never got the original, and they never emailed us, right, email would have been helpful in this case, they never emailed it to us, and I. Immediately asked what, when was this sent out, they don't track them down when they send it out, so they, they had no idea, got those or not.
Actually, I'm looking at this Merrimack Valley glass and mirror, and, and the printed email address on the invoice itself. That DPW Director at W N E B U R Y dot org, which is correct, the email from the vendor. Uh says DPW Director at W N E B U R Y dot org, so it looks like they were missing a. Uh W, so. One, one thing just as a point of commentary. And I know Speaker Jenny on this, we would love it if all bills went to the finance department. This is one of the things about changing from a highly decentralized form of government to a more centralized, town manager form of government. And we do have certain departments that absolutely would not accept that, and so we still do have bills being sent to different. Boards, some of these commissions, departments, it's a lot better than it was, but it's still more decentralized than, I would like it.
But in this case.
It's, it's not the case here, it's just, the point is like when, it's, it's like how many bills do we pay years, like ten thousand bills a year, like. The more centralized, the more consistent you're gonna make it.
And to that point, I, I, you've mentioned the path moving toward the purchase order system.
Well, no, I, 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 if it's come up, I've. Well, no, I, 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 if it's come up, I thought it's something we need to add a staff person to, because we don't have the staff to do a purchase.
Okay, but I, I thought you need a paper for every single one. I thought you would thought that.
No, I think above a certain value, it would be worth the time, like for purchases above top five thousand dollars, something like that. If we got into that with every transaction, we wouldn't need a much bigger fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, um, the Hiller company?
Not much bigger, but we need more.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We did not want to add any support for that.
It's inspection for the sprinkler systems and for relocations.
So is that sprinkler systems where? Sprinkler systems where? In the building, this building?
Public works and, um, children's capital.
No, it's cool, not paid, it's dead. That'll get what? Okay.
Make a motion to approve Article Number Sixteen, fund the unpaid bills, the total fund forty, uh, twenty four hundred thirty dollars. With the six line items just noted.
So this would be also, uh, our pre-cash?
Yes.
So this is our pre-cash, and this, uh, have we been keeping track of sunset dates? This would not, uh, with this, this?
Wouldn't you, you could put one for F one twenty four, you, you don't need to, but you could.
Right.
Huh?
You don't need a sunset date.
But you could, if you want, it's okay.
If it comes up, we'll use twenty twenty four. Okay, our side of the table?
Make a motion to replicate their motion, Chris's motion for Article Sixteen to pay the unpaid bills twenty ten thirty.
All in favor? Alright, it's unanimous. Thank you. I'll, I'll write this one up.
Thank you. We, we will have more front of mind by a town meeting. It's just, I haven't looked at this in a while, because of other.
Other more pressing matters.
Correct.
Understood. Now we're down to repeal the short term rental bylaw, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
You should do a presentation on that.
All in favor?
But we are gonna, we are gonna wanna know what we're going to, so. Yeah, like, like Rick, like Rick.
The bylaw stinks.
How do you handle it?
No, so the bylaw was drafted to deal with specific residents in town in two thousand sixteen, was hastily constructed and not well thought out. And it's only been attempted to be used just once.
Uh, well. Well, there was that one, there was the one that was filed withdrawn.
Yeah.
And there was the current one, so.
Yeah.
Two and a half.
Yeah, but it doesn't include procedures, you know, what's required is part of the process, and it just, uh, just trying to shut that one down. Yeah, exactly.
And if you keep it in place, somebody can apply with the weak by law, then you're stuck with it. So you wanna pull it back and at a certain point, get it strongly written.
And, and oh, by the way, a judge in Massachusetts had said, uh, that short term rentals are problematic in.
Unless specifically allowed.
Unless specifically allowed, right? So, 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 um, we're safe not having one. Then, then another situation.
That, that's correct. It's not like you would have them without licensing. You actually, they would not be.
Yeah, they, they would be able to, which gives you great breathing room, and oh, by the way, short term rentals themselves can be highly problematic.
And we have the accessory dwelling unit bylaw coming at the same time. Which is a little more specific, but it's too, you could have it as a separate property on your building, but it's not short term rentals, so that fixes a lot of problems.
Right, it's, it's a very desirable thing, so there was also a need to, as Chris just said, to kind of make it really clean for the accessory dwelling units. And this other thing, we can definitely.
Yeah, well, you know, there are a number of other communities next door in Newburyport right now that are working on, um, uh, short term rental bylaws, and you know, I, I think it makes sense for us to try to learn from others appearing to them.
Yeah, and it's going on nationwide.
Right, right. But, yeah, but I mean, we might be hard for us to compare ourselves to New York.
No, the point, the point is that that short term rental market has had a lot of unintended consequences. A pause is needed, and, and from my point of view, the, the uncertainty of what it can cause in a single family residential zone give, gives me great pause, and I've seen it down in Eaton, where you own property, I've seen it in P Town, I mean, and, and, you know, it's good, whatever they think they've learned, let's be doubly cautious anyway.
And I'd just like to elaborate a little bit on what Wendy and Chris alluded to, because I just think it's really important, is the, the bylaw has written completely lacks any kind of stated standards for why a board either would or would not approve a license application, whereas those of you with, you know, background in planning boards and so forth, you know, that, you know, it's really important if a board's approving or not approving, that be citing the reasons. What are the performance standards that are set out in the bylaw that were not met? This doesn't have that, so that was the, the point they were making, because if something comes in and it meets these things, and, and the board doesn't think it makes sense for whatever reasons, they really, based on this bylaw, can't point to language in the bylaw to say these performance standards weren't met. It then becomes my, you know, the concern would be, you know, uh, yeah, there's, there's not, not.
These are, these are legal matters.
Yeah.
They need attention in that manner.
That's, that's right, because it's appealable, but the other thing I do wanna just get out there on, on record is I've had, I've had concerns raised from applicants as well about the faulty, or, or what they perceive as false in the bylaw. A couple of years ago, when we had one that was filed and withdrawn, I remember that, in that particular instance, the household, um, would have needed to make, you know, some investments in their property to meet the different requirements. And the way the bylaw is written right now, where the, uh, licensing is only, you know, it's gotta be renewed at the end of the calendar year. I remember they came, they came to me and they said, well, if we invest this money and we get this license, what assures us that after December thirty first is gonna be renewed? I said, there is no assurance. So it's kind of like it doesn't work for the regulating authority, it doesn't really work for the applicant, so it's really, we haven't seen many of them, we've seen two and a half, I'm saying a half because of that particular one, which was a five quarter withdrawn. Everyone of them's been nasty, gobbled up time, been frustrating for everybody involved, including the applicant, so I, I a hundred percent agree. Thing to do is, is pull it back and really rethink, like, do we even want this? And if we do, to do it.
Yeah, do it in a more, more thoughtful way.
If you don't want it, then you better make some statement about prohibiting it.
Well, but that's where this case law that, that Rob mentioned from the Lynnfield case, that, that Sam had, had made us aware of, a fairly recent case in twenty twenty one, establishes that if it's not a specifically permitted use in a residential zoning district, that is a sufficient case to deny it. And that's a recent case, uh, just from a year and a half ago, so.
By the way, Sam is.
Or two, two years.
And Sam is excellent.
Sam is excellent.
Sam is friggin' excellent.
He knows his job. He knows the jobs.
Thank goodness.
Right.
So anyway, the, the planning board would speak to this as well, right?
It's a non-zoning bylaw. They really kept, I mean, I can speak for them, and certainly they.
No, okay.
But I don't think they're gonna think to say about it. Yeah, they really have been arms length from this.
What would Ray cook say? Okay, fine, okay, if you're comfortable, I, 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 I see it as is, you know, a planning board issue, whether they recognize it or not.
Well, it's a select board, um, the select board is the one that wrote the policy or the bylaw.
That, that may be, but if I were sitting on a planning board, I'd be alarmed that the select board is writing stuff like that.
When we talked to town council over the, over the summer, Sam and, uh, Sam and I had a call, and I think Sue might have been on that call as well, I can't remember, but we talked with our, our land use council Robin Stein, and, and she said in her experience in many towns, you know, short term rental is, is really two issues. There's the land use issue and the licensing issue, and it is typical for the select board to have a licensing, but yeah, there's a land use.
There's a land use issue.
And it may be that the planning board has kind of cut their length because of the circumstances of how and why this was drafted in the first place.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to say is, if we were to go forward, what I'm saying is, Angus just had a view, but you have licensing issues, but you have the land use issues, and I wouldn't wanna see us go forward as a town without planning board input on that issue.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's all I was trying to say.
And that's one reason that's not worth revising.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 exactly, because it would have been you revising it rather than going through a process that, like Rick described, you might be a little more thoughtful. So, did you guys vote?
No, I was just making the motion right now. Make the motion to approve Article Twenty One to repeal the short term rental bylaw.
All in favor?
And on our side of the table, by the way, there's no funding source here, and no sunset needed. Um, our side of the table?
So are you voting? Are you trying to decide you're gonna vote on bylaws?
Well, we think, well, okay, so we, we vote, as Casey would say, every single warrant article can have financial impact.
Ab- absolutely.
Right, so, so, uh, that, but that's a good question. Do you guys see it as something that we would wanna comment on, even though it's zero dollars? Uh, from my point of view, I, I, I would, I would, I would speak without reservation, I support it if I'd like us. But this, to me, is like when we had that other planning board issue, uh, that, that we.
We spoke sales and sales.
What?
The soldiers in sales.
You're gonna throw that computer at him, I think.
But, but. But in any regard, so, uh, Wendy's asking, you know, are we, is this, the, is this warrant article, we're gonna have any, anything to say on it?
It was up to me. I would just record our vote and then let the planning board make their commentary, and we don't, we don't need to comment on it.
We're in the firm anymore?
You mean the, the select board?
Oh, the select board, whoever. I just think it, it seems like a pretty straightforward conversation. Our vote implies what we already think. I don't think we need to stand up and say this is a really stupid bylaw.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, we don't have to, we don't have to stand up and, and.
Or you can provide a rationale.
Well, even the rationale, I, and we did this a couple of times in the, in the last couple of booklets, is, you know, when, when we write these, uh, especially when the article requests come out of my office, you know, we try to write these, like, you know, if people found this article request form coherent and, and compelling, you can cut, base that, you know, because it, it basic, I mean, it might work better a little.
I, 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 I think we should vote on this. I'm not saying we should vote on everyone. I would want to vote on this. I think this has consequences to the town, and, and then I would wanna write the rationale to it.
Consequences to the town are?
This is, you, if, if you wanna get to newspaper articles from all the communities that are struggling with the administration alone of this issue.
But to repeal it.
That's why you, that's why you wouldn't want to repeal it, to avoid administrative headaches that wealth leads going through or, or province down. I mean, this, this, this has been, not only is it bad land, land use management, it's been burdensome to, to communities.
But it hasn't been a burden to us, because we only had two and a half.
I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't.
No, I'm talking like hundreds of staff hours.
The most recent one has consumed.
No, it's.
I did leave a lot, that's where you guys.
They could spend a hundred dollars.
I found four or more emails, I, I was many a time for like. I just, I just think that, the, the.
Just since you saw it a week ago.
Regarding, regarding the one we got.
Correct, yeah, no, it's been a huge time thing. It's been very profitable forever. So it's gobbled, it's continuing to gobble.
So the reason to repeal it in part is to take this off of the table, so we don't waste time and energy.
I'm not saying that should be repealed, I'm just saying that you could say that everything has a financial impact, but I think that this, the crux of this issue is more about the fact that it's poorly written and not about, you know, everything has an administrative burden, right? So, I, it just seems like, you know, we're overreaching a little bit. You know, we're, we're not like Select Board Part Two, we're Finance Committee, and there's no value, no tangible.
Who want to make sure that the administration in the town is efficiently.
So is our rationale gonna say that we don't support it because of the administrative burden?
In part, in part? It's, yeah, it, it, this has, you've already just heard that, that this has, by, we're exposed here to additional time and energy that we have to pay for if we don't get this off the books.
I get it.
Well, eventually it could be exposed to it.
Legally, you can say.
Somebody's, I, I, I think it should be repealed. I'm not saying.
Okay, so can we have a vote?
So, I make a motion.
Thank you.
Well, Chris, the head. On Article Twenty One, to repeal the short term rental bylaw.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor? Yes, it's unanimous. I'll write the rationale.
Great.
Got it. Thank you, and there's no sunset?
No sunset, got it.
We're in the home stretch, guys.
Okay. So the next ones, um, and I know this, this seems like a lot, you know, these three MGLs, uh, uh, the assessors, the.
Oh, we have, yeah. Oh, you're gonna hold.
No, no, we're doing the fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, uh, the, uh, and I said the twenty seventh, I mean, that could be something up in mind, I, I just, I wanted to allow a little more discussion, so. The, so this is, uh, so just for a little bit of background, I don't think I put, actually, I think this is in the article.
I'm gonna group all three of these together for conversation, I think.
I think they're all, yeah, I think they're all, is it the same policy of, is different sections of mess general law, and it's different, uh, offices that are affected, but as a matter of kind of administrative practice, uh, you know, I'm a big supporter of continuing education and certification for professional staff, and, and the board is, is a hundred percent supportive of that as well, so in terms of administrative practice, uh, these mess general laws, once accepted, and none of these have yet been accepted by the town, uh, provide basically an entitlement for, uh, certain named staff, uh, who obtain professional certification to annual stipends in different amounts, thousand dollars, five hundred dollars. In practice, uh, the job offers, offer letters I have written in the, uh, five years I've been here, where we've hired a new chief assessor, we've hired a new town clerk, we've hired a new existing town clerk, actually a couple of them. Uh, we've hired, uh, a new treasure collector. In each instance, the offer letters I have written have provided for these stipends, partly because we wanna foster a culture of support with professional certification, and partly because that's important to be competitive with neighboring communities, because oftentimes, you know, professionals are leaving jobs where they're getting certain, you know, uh, compensation, and so it's just kind of like, you know, uh, you wanna be competitive and, and encourage certification, so. So in practice, the reason I left, I left blank the amount, and I, you know, we can talk about how to fill that in, because um, it's not like it's a direct expense, because it's not an appropriation, but approving these does create a financial obligation for the town going forward. In terms of current situation, we are already paying our chief assessor stipends, that was in the offer letter that we wrote when we hired him, you know, four years ago or so. Uh, we're already paying the town clerk, it's just the town clerk, the stipends that are listed, that's where their offer letters were already.
I haven't paid, yeah, I haven't signed in, yeah.
He's not, he's working for.
I'm working, working for certification.
And the treasure collector, uh, has that in her offer letter, so the only, there is one, uh, our assistant sector whose tenure predates mine, is not currently getting, uh, uh, stipends, so if this was approved, that individual would get a five hundred dollar stipend, that person is certified, and under the MGL, part-time, uh, employees are.
Up to five hundred.
Five hundred.
It's all ten percent of, up to.
Right.
Ten percent of salary up to.
Correct, yeah, so which is, which in, in effect, would be five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So there is, if we approve all three, in terms of the current fiscal year, it would have five hundred dollars that we'd be paying to one employee who's not currently getting a stipend. Everything else is already in those current employees.
But you can absorb that in the existing budgets, is that why there's no dollars attached to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're talking net five hundred bucks.
Correct, yeah.
But maybe, so it may, but, but it may, but it may already be, it may already be in the budget and.
It is, yeah, we carry, in, in, it just so happens that in assessing, uh, we carry about three thousand dollars in that for, uh, on the, for like office coverage when those, when both employees are gone. So, but I just wanna be clear that for going forward, and turnover basically locks in what has been practiced in the five years I've been here, which is.
So we have other employees in town that also are eligible for stipends.
Oh, yeah.
So this is not uncommon, so we have people in DPW that are.
That's union, so, but yeah, there are.
It doesn't matter what it should be.
Correct, they're union.
Everybody looks around to.
Yeah, in that case, it's often certifications or licenses, but yes, there's.
So we have.
That's right.
Already got tons of places where, for certifications, for these things that are recognized standards outside.
That's right.
And, but are important to the practice, we already do.
Yes.
It's not a unique concept.
No, not a unique.
Now you're doing, accepting the mass general law is validated, that's, that's already being done.
That's, I don't understand, I'll be, that, that, why would you do that, if you do it as a matter of practice, why would you require the town to formally adopt a law that would require you to do that?
Uh, basically to, to codify what, you know, what, uh, what we think is right. So if people think it's right, I think they'll vote for it, if they don't, they, they don't need to, but, but that is, that is the intent, is to kind of formalize what we've been doing in practice, so, uh, and where it is, Chris said, it's kind of like.
The fine thing is if you vote no, you're still getting a stipend, doesn't matter.
Exactly, I'm just wondering why we would.
Accept that one.
Touch town too.
He doesn't have to pay the five hundred dollars to get out of here.
But I, I think fair, fair, and, and when you see other employees getting recognized on this fashion, I think you've gotta extend it.
Yeah, and I think when people go to their, you know, their peer, peer, uh, conferences with their counterparts in other communities, it's just, it helps to show that the community values them, you know, ma- getting certified, maintaining the certification and, uh, you know, continuing education together.
It's only a question I've gotten from other clerks, it's, oh, did your town accept it, didn't get that stipend, because if I leave in ten years, and Angus leaves in ten years, and a new clerk comes in under a different manager, they may not get that thousand.
They have a negotiated.
Uh, they will get it automatically if they are, so, so it's incentive to come to Westbury because, hey, I already have my certification, so you didn't go there and get.
So as to twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, from your side of the table, are you gonna do what, one motion for all three?
Yeah, is that, all right, agreed?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go into that.
No, no, Jim, you can write it as three, but they're gonna make, yeah, look, come on, we're, we're almost there, Jim, just, just go along, just go.
Procedure, let's just do a, I'll do each one individually. It should be quick.
I make a motion to accept article twenty-three, uh, as listed.
Second.
On favor?
Hi. Make a motion to accept article number twenty-four as listed.
Second.
On favor?
Hi. Make a motion to accept, article number twenty-five was presented.
Right, on favor?
Hi.
Cool. Um, and these don't, uh, have any sources nor sunset dates.
Correct.
So, uh, on our side of the table, do we have any motions, Anna? No?
No.
No.
No?
I'll make a motion with Chris for article twenty-three.
Uh, do, let's, oh.
Okay, article twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five as Chris said.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, it's unanimous.
Those three separate votes.
Three separate, yeah, Jim's gonna.
You heard me, you said, I, I.
I, I, oh, thank you, yes, you're right, you're right, you're right. Uh, I think Anna's gonna do the rationale.
I knew I was gonna be comments.
Happy to go straight there.
Oh, yeah, by the way, when we go through this process, so at the end on rationales, Ross, Chris alluded to it later, or earlier, but Ross does this amazing job of of getting everything into the booklet, done in good form and stuff, but Angus is also part of this process. So if I write something, Angus will rewrite it.
What?
So he did great, so.
So can I, can I throw my, throw in the water on an issue that's not mine?
Why, 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 why? If it's something you ask.
To help Ross, because he does an incredible job of putting the booklet together.
I just said that.
So if you get your rationales together now, don't wait till the last week, like if you got a few minutes later this week, bang it out.
Isn't he on the slideboard now?
I'm, I'm trying to help you keep the, one of the best members you got in the panel. She's like Lamontisi, like.
So, so what's first step, what's first step, okay, yes. We're, we're going to hammer that home, we just weren't gonna do it tonight because we have a habit of getting our meetings done in good order. I know you guys like to continue meetings until midnight or something.
Moving on to twenty-six.
Moving on, yes, thank you, Jenna, you're up.
You want me to present?
Yeah, if you would.
Thank you, Jenna, and Ross, thank you.
Um, so, this is to establish, um, do I need to get out to the booking?
No.
This is to establish a special purpose stabilization fund specifically for the opioid settlement, um, the, the board did sign one to, um, receive settlement payments, um, so currently, as we mentioned earlier, um, the money goes into the general fund because we have no legal mechanism for it with, without this, um, so.
And then it also has to be then appropriated by town meeting, is that correct?
Yes, um, so.
Whereas this allows it to be used for eligible purposes.
Right, right, this is like what we did for the.
Other things, yes.
Uh, what was the fund, we, we just created one for.
Council, council agent?
Revolve.
Pretty wonderful.
It's different, but, yeah, not the council, the agent, but.
Special purpose.
We did one for the Community Preservation Act, and we fund those, on that too.
Transfer the funds to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah. It's closer to the Affordable Housing Trust, it's a separate account that can be expanded without a town.
Right.
There you go.
So, well, there has to be two, two votes for it, so you establish the stabilization fund, and then you also have to um, vote to accept paragraph, the fourth paragraph of, um, that, that general law, which allows you to dedicate those funds without appropriation, so, and then you have to also dedicate, you also have to vote the percentage of funds that we're going to put into the stabilization, be it twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent. Or if you need to do a hundred percent of the settlement funds came into the stabilization fund, that can be then spent without further appropriation. Otherwise, if it's a, just another type of stabilization fund, you have to then appropriate from it at time.
So who determines how it's spent, about the town agency's office? Like, would people apply for uses of it?
Um, no, so it would be specifically in the vote, what, I mean, for, is this for?
So assuming the vote passes down the road, how do these funds actually get?
Oh, paid from, from the fund, it would, it would probably, um, either split or.
The board of health? Maybe the board of health?
Well, it's, in terms of, once the funds set up, the, uh, the town accountant would have a role in ensuring, as with every dollar spent, ensuring it's spent for a lawful purpose.
Right.
So it would be constrained by the, uh, allowable purposes in the fund, in terms of like from a policy standpoint, um, you know, does it wanna be used for like, uh, um, you know, I won't, any, any number of theoretical uses it could be used.
White narking.
Yeah, 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 it could be, uh.
Who makes it determine?
That's a good question.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, cause you could see the board of health doing intervention.
Board of health, please, you could see some fire.
Um.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna be other things, it could be, it could be some sort of program that approached you and says, we, we offer this service, but would like your support, so.
Yeah, the authenticity of the, of the uses of the funds being broad.
Yeah, 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 so that's an interesting question.
Yeah, um.
It may be.
Ultimately, the, who does it come, you know, what, what body does it come down to make it that, yeah? Is this, now it's gonna be stagnant, I mean, is it, that's the end of the thirty-eight hundred, is it?
No, no, it's gonna continue to come in, so, so the board actually entered how many different, six different settlement agreements with each of the like legally binding settlement agreements with, with each of the, you know, Johnson Johnson, and there were, you know, so, you know, we did them all at the same time, and it was all the same standard language that the attorneys provided, but there's actually six, I think it's, it's six or five, there are like a difference, seven, six different settlements agreements.
What was, but didn't one of them just get thrown out? The Sacra?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, it did.
Yeah, it did, so, but to the question, you know, you could see the board of health wanting to pursue stuff, you can see the police wanted to pursue.
Has anybody read the, the statute, because it states it, that's the question, it might spell it out here.
Exactly, right, so, so, I mean, we can support this without even knowing the answer to that.
It's, we'll, we'll table it and talk about it Monday, I mean, I, I'd like to have a better answer for you, you know, before you vote, and, and there's.
But the article itself is just to create a home of its own, I think.
Yeah, so I think we should.
Yeah, that's right.
I, I, to Wendy's point, I, I, I feel comfortable that we could take a vote on it, it's just left to you to sort out how it gets administered, I was just point, pointing out, I think that Rick, Rick had raised it that there, there's gonna be several people that might be looking to use this. If that's the case, if one fund, then I think you guys may have, up by default, being a filter, because I, I don't know, any other department could really filter it.
Well, but I think it's kind of foolish to go ahead and vote about, have clarity on that at this point, and let's just take a time out.
You can have a different recovery, is that on an individual basis, could you have someone come in and apply for money to treat their, you know, drug, if they could, son, or?
Right, so we'll, right, so, so, to Chris's point, then, we bumped it up to the next meeting, whatever, Angus, can you?
We're not even prepared, and that's not that.
Or the, or the meeting after. We could go to the twenty-seven.
I just feel like that's not really pertinent, what we're at, though.
But the questions are come up at the town meeting, and I, I, I really, I think it's good to, you know, make sure.
We agree we should have a town meeting.
Yeah.
So nine twenty-seven, I guess?
Yeah, let's put it out for nine, I think that's, that's.
I think Jenny will say something.
Well, I was gonna say that I do think it's a, it's a good mechanism, because otherwise, we have to wait for these funds to, so close to free cash and wait for the county to appropriate from their, when, you know.
And in the meantime, they have to be accounted for separately, because even though they're not appropriated, we can't use them for anything but what for settlement purposes provide.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think the future discussion is, is, is gonna lead to being against it.
No, I don't think so either.
I, I think, I think it's just, uh, to make sure we establish clarity, and then we say, yes, you know, that's all.
Yeah, because we can't, we, we can't, we can't wait, can't tweet.
Yeah, if the answer comes back as weird, you know, then, right, so it's, it, this is gonna be a, yeah, it's, 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 to that, we can take the vote, I think we're a little better off what we actually.
I understand, yeah. So Jenny, how many funds have come in, right, I remember seeing that, I was just, went right.
Yes, so, um, three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and twelve cents when I wrote this, and then just today, we received another six hundred and sixty.
So has that been deposited, or is the check sitting, you know?
So the thirty hundred dollars, um, has closed to free cash, that's now certified. This will go to miscellaneous revenues and will close to free cash until it can be appropriated into the.
It's not the appropriate appropriation uh, in the spring or something to transfer back from.
After free cash.
No, I, I agree, let's, we're, like, seven, that, cause the question, no, not being, it's, it's a good.
What is, like, what are the questions that we need to?
How does the money get expended, who has the authority, for what purposes?
Yeah, well, I mean, the purposes I think are clear, right?
Yeah.
Um, but as far as who, who and how.
But for purposes, Brandon, you, you, you may want, some of us, so, having a little summary that says it can go here, and go here, and go here, might be beneficial. In other words, you could answer the question of, can an outside agency come in and, and request support from the town, that's what.
Right, it's even the answer, cause individual citizen coming, it's, for recovery from life.
Right.
But, you know, I don't have the answer, but I think, again, we can all reason, the general law is included in the act.
Just think of the questions that you would have administrated, and, and then it's.
Some of the questions.
Yeah, and then it's, it's like, okay, so who could come and ask me, you know, wh- what's board of health gonna wanna, which is police department, that sort of thing. It's, it's good to run through it, because by the time we go to town meeting, that's, I mean, it may not come out, but we should know the answer.
When it's only thirty-eight hundred dollars, that's one thing, if it never grows to forty and fifty thousand, that's people say, hey, that could work in our budget, board of health or something, right, well, maybe we have another fluke, I don't know, but you just wanna decide who gets the ability to use it.
Right.
And how.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm doing, right?
But, but I think you should take away a sense that, that, you know, the answer could be that's.
Yeah.
Is that we want to know. Thank you, Jenna.
Uh, I think we're at the end, are we at the end?
We are.
No more coin tonight.
No more, well, we, I don't know.
So, so how do we, do you feel it works?
I'm in love with it.
Yeah.
I know, I think, I think it's long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's wonderful, yeah, I can't, I can't imagine, I mean, really, I wouldn't want to hurt anyone.
I haven't been able to share my conversation, and then, actually, I haven't, I haven't.
That's different, yeah, right, I mean, I got in my wire.
Again, the lots, right, that's, two separate meetings too.
And Jim, did, did it work okay for you for minutes? Okay, good.
Yeah, because all I had to do was duplicate the, the, just like that.
Hey, does Max, uh, have the capability of working towards a stipend?
Yes, he does.
So, uh, the, there's two types of certifications for town clerk?
No, he's talking about stipends.
Oh, that's, that's a new nation.
No, no, it was, uh, I don't know, i- isn't it up to what we're adopting?
No, oh, stipend for town clerk, oh, I thought you meant to write your minutes.
You get, put that aside for us.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Or, or the things that we were looking at tonight.
So, so unfortunately, that MGL does not apply to assistant town clerks.
Okay, but is there an MGL that does?
There is not, so there's two, there's, there's two types of certifications in the state, in, in the.
Park work, okay.
There's the international certification, and then there's the state certification, the MGL only applies to the state certification, and the only way to get the state certification is you have to be a town clerk for at least three years.
Okay, so it doesn't apply, okay, good.
But it is in his offer letter that if he gets the international certification, we'll get a sticker.
Okay.
International certification as a town clerk?
It is the.
And we go to school in Paris next year. It's the, it's, yeah, actually, there is a conference.
Okay.
I'll be back in my, but the International Municipal Clerks Association is, it's an organization that covers North America and parts of Europe, um, for.
So, so, so Max does have the ability to go for a certification that would get him stuck, but here's the reason I ask. When we were up in the planning board, excuse me, planning board, water department, we had asked if they were considered giving up their stipend as elected member. Uh, their response was, uh, we were hesitant to do that, we would want you to come back after having completed a course of review that would explain why there should be no stipends. So to me, we have stipends that come about because of certifications, goes to the DPW, goes to, I'm sure, police and others.
Employee.
Employees.
Yeah.
So wh- what would we be doing about the water department's request that we do something to prove to them that there should be no stipends? Is that, is that something that?
We've got some research in my office over the summer, there's plenty of towns that, I'm sure board members have stipends, and there's others that don't, it's purely a matter of policy, within this town, uh, that's the only one that does, but in other towns.
I used to get a stipend, I know, the select, board is likely, we used to get stipends to not.
Yeah, right, so having decided that, are we, are we presuming that we'll continue our discussions with them to?
I am.
Yeah, okay, and so you were aware that they asked us to do some sort of?
Actually, I think the, they volunteered Angus to do that recently.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we sent out.
So you're, you are.
No, we already, we did what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Beck and I did some.
Is there a agenda for a couple of meetings, but I don't know if they ever.
Yeah, okay, good, I just wanted to know, because I, I go to their meetings and, 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 you know, to me, uh, their, their question is fair, but the answer is, but we don't give out stipends to any elected member, that's my response.
Yeah, and that's what we said.
Right, exactly, so I just wanted to know where we're headed, that, good, okay, thank you. Cause as you know, the water department has budget issues.
Really? You just gave us so many grants.
If I could, while we're all here, just really briefly a preview for Monday, and not every Monday, but one thing that's, that you can expect to hear Monday, that's a little bit different than what's in the packet. Uh, so we have a, a pretty active, kind of ad hoc invasive species working group, uh, with our conservation agent at the core, Rick's very involved, and a number of residents who are very knowledgeable, so that's a group that meets regularly, we did have a, a meeting, whether it was last Thursday.
Yeah.
And there's, uh, as you know, what's in the, uh, draft warrant right now is twenty-five thousand dollars. Basically, the need for, or, or the potential use of invasive species management funds to hire like an actual firm, as opposed to like volunteers, one thing. I won't say it's limitless, but it's like a lot, like, there's a lot, so there was discussion last Thursday's meeting of, you know, instead of taking twenty with a rounding up for, uh, permanent costs to twenty-five, why not go bigger? The worst that can, people can. The worst that can, people can say is no. So they have been working to uh fine tune a request for more money. With uh specific sites in mind uh for next season. That would be targeted for eradication effort for invasive species. So they have been invited to present on Monday night. Uh that will be part of the meeting, the joint meeting. So they're working, we'll have something for the packet for tomorrow where they're gonna be, you know, outlining the sites that have been prioritized. There's been a lot of active, uh you know, chatter in the last week, a lot of good thinking on that. And uh we can't expect them to come in with a bigger dollar amount. Uh you know, the select board can say, we'll hold the line to twenty five, or we go to a different number. And I think this sequence worked well, that whatever they do, you can then recommend or not. I just didn't want, with a number of people having been invited for Monday night and coming in and doing good work on that. I don't want them to come in and anyone to say, wait, it says twenty five. What are you talking about? We specifically encouraged them, and I'll think ownership, I specifically encouraged them. And maybe I was feeling giddy because we had just got free cash certified, but I said, guys, like, twenty five grand isn't gonna go that far, really. So like, maybe let's think a little bigger. And I think they were really enthusiastic, saying, yeah, like, there's a lot that can be done. So. You know, Nancy and Carol and Patricia and Rick and and Michelle have all been thinking about like what sites, what the cost might be. And that is something we'll have materials for Monday's packet. And uh, you know, and if. And it's it's gonna be up to the board what to put on the warrant, it's gonna be up to the thing come what to recommend, it's gonna be up to the voters what to approve. But but we wanted to have the discussion of of maybe being a little more ambitious than twenty five thousand for invasive species for next season.
And all of this ends up reading towards public education where people can apply to their own properties, perhaps, like this.
Hopefully, that's. The goals.
Yeah, it it yeah, because I mean, the town, you know, the town. We can't cover them.
You know, we have control of some small, relatively small percentage of the land in town.
But the other thing, if you take the lead and have people have the model, it becomes a lot easier, because otherwise people are searching on the internet for their own solutions.
Right, I think we ought to just buy two goats and forget the rest.
Well, goats are great.
I think we need to buy two goats for acres.
They poison ivy, I mean.
They go through it quick.